All right, you know, we have like thirty-five minutes to get through a whole lot of stuff. You know, it is what it is, but I am going to let you know now that these little resources are available at our RIC Resource Center. And so this is a great little book called This I Know, Simple Biblical Defense for LGBTQ Christians. It is actually written by a Baptist pastor. Shock of all shock, I know. Uh, I think he's gotten in some trouble for it, but you know, this is a great little quick read. Good trouble. Um, I haven't made my way through this book, but I've heard from others that it's fantastic. It's called Transforming the Bible and the Lives of Transgender Christians. I had this sitting on my desk and Kenna, our new C Y F director saw it. And she was actually roommates in seminary with the author. So she kind of knew him, knew them as they were going through their transition. So that's a really cool connection, huh? Then there's this one from reconciling words called reconciling scripture for Lutherans. It's a great resource, not very big, easy to read. And if you can't find any of these downstairs at the resource center, then let me know and I can get you a copy. I also have this resource that I've handed out to many people over the years. It was written by Dr. Lisa Davison, who is here with us two weeks ago, called What the Bible Says or Doesn't Say About Homosexuality. She's given me permission to share this with whoever would like a copy. So if you would like a copy, let me know and I will get one of those to you. All right. So here's our plan for today, our work for today. Um, but we are going to cover all of those texts that Al Williams talked about being in the Hebrew Bible um, last week as part of the seven clobber passages as they've come to be known. And I've thrown a couple more in for good measure. Um, we'll see how far we get. I totally forgot what I was gonna tell you. If it comes back, I'll tell you. I think what I was gonna say had to do with that welcome work. Like we call this work, right? And um, oh, here's what it is. Here's my connection. It's come back. Um, Lee told me this morning, we were looking at the calendar about how every single week we have something. This weekend, this weekend, this weekend, this weekend. He goes, and you know what's the next weekend? Your aunt's coming into town. And um, she's flying in from California for a week and staying with us. And he's like, we got a lot of work to do between now and then. And because when you get ready to welcome somebody into your home, you do work, right? Uh, usually there's a lot of cleaning and organizing and we have a hole in the wall to patch and you know, just all of those things. He's been working in the yard because we're still clearing out trees from the July or the June eighteenth storm. So when we get ready to welcome somebody, when we get ready to provide hospitality, there's work that goes into it. There always is work. So this is our work that we are doing to get ready to welcome to be um, a hospitable place to other people. If we are going to create a welcome statement and we are going to approve in a welcome statement, um, perhaps, perhaps not, but we want to be ready to be able to actually do it. So people are not coming into our messy house, so to speak, right? And so that's part of what this, why we call it welcome work? Because there is work that has to be done to get ready to welcome people. So I'm glad that you all are here to be a part of this work that we're doing together. So we're gonna do these in reverse order. We're not gonna start with Genesis and go through like, maybe would make more sense to you. We're gonna start with the end. All right, sound good? So Deuteronomy twenty-two, five. Anybody know what that says? Don't know your Deuteronomy very well? Well, here's what it says. It says, "A woman shall not wear a man's apparel, nor shall a man put on a woman's garment, for whoever does such a thing as abhorrent to the Lord your God." All right. So what might this passage be used? Who might this passage be used to clobber? Carl. He's not raising his hand to answer the question. He is speaking for himself. Correct. Um, so this verse is often used to talk about drag or talk about the fashion choices of transgendered or gender fluid peoples. So if we are going to assign this passage to those groups of persons, we have to be willing to ask ourselves a question. This verse wasn't written in 2023. It was written a couple of years ago. And so we need to ask ourselves, what was going on in ancient Israel that would have inspired this verse? This verse came from somewhere. For some reason, it didn't drop out of the sky like Dr. Davison said, but it was written in scripture for a specific purpose. So a good follow-up question might be, what's the difference between a man's apparel and women's garments? That's what we have, right? So think in your head of an ancient Israelite, man's apparel and a woman's garment. What comes to mind? A suit and a dress? They're both robes, right? Tunics, robes? Not a whole lot of difference in what they look like? All right. So why? Why? One of the main reasons of the laws of the Hebrew Bible were to keep a person, and primarily a male person, ritually clean so that he could enter the temple to worship God. You couldn't come to church, you couldn't enter temple unless you were ritually clean. So anything that made a person unclean was labeled as an abomination. So that's the, that's their lens through which they are looking at an abomination. When we hear that word, we probably think something very different. But when they heard that word, it was something that made a person ritually unclean. So think about um, the story of the Good Samaritan. Everyone's heard that story, right? Part of the issue of that story was that the priests and the Levites who passed by couldn't help the man, A, because he was a foreigner, B, because he was hurt and bloody. Both of those things would have made them ritually unclean. That man was an abomination on the side of the road. And so therefore they passed by. So that's what we're talking about, okay? So um, a man wouldn't be able to wear a woman's tunic because a woman was typically unclean. All right. Why? Why were women unclean? Menstruation. Their menstrual cycles made them unclean. And then after they had their menstrual cycle, there was a process for purification that took a really long time. And so it kept them unclean for most of the month. They maybe had a week when they were all right. Okay? Um, touching bodily discharge made a person unclean. So think about what the role of a mother is, raising young children, and how many bodily excretions go along with being a mom? And wiping runny noses and cleaning tissues. Um, touching sick people or dead people made one unclean. And so who are the people that traditionally cared for the sick or prepared a dead body for burial? Women. Who was it that showed up to Jesus's tomb to prepare his body? Women. So because of their constant uncleanliness, women were not even allowed to touch the clothing, much less wear it, of a man. So think about that story um, in the New Testament where the woman who had the bleeding disorder reached out and touched the hem of Jesus's cloak, remember? That would have been against the law because it would have, it would have, she would have transferred her impurity onto Jesus, making him unclean and unable to go to temple. All right. So when we talk about this, that's the lens at which the people are making these decisions. Okay? There's another explanation um, that a Jewish scholar named Rabbi Elazer Ben Jacob um, has put forth. And he said several hundred years later than the scriptures, like this, these words are a thousand years old or so. But he suggested that the words used for men's apparel, like in this right here, specifically referred to armor and weapons. So men's apparel would have been not so much the tunic, but armor and weapons used in battle. So he believed that this verse was written specifically to keep women from dressing as men to go into battle, and the society was so few people. Another thing that the ancient Israelites were really concerned with were building their nation. They started out with a small group of people. They had a small group of people. But if you're gonna go into battle, if you're going to um, be seen as a legitimate people, you have to up your numbers, right? So it was very important for them to um, not lose anyone capable of childbearing. So we wouldn't want women to don men's apparel and go into battle because if they died, then that would be one less person able to produce a child. So um, I also think that if this verse was referred, was referring to crossdressing, how many of you have gotten in your, women have gotten in your husband's closet and stolen something out of there? Yeah. Um, my daughter, for one, would be in really big trouble because she has stolen a lot of things out of her dad's closet. And um, even my son tends to think, steal things of mine. So um, think about how often today we wear clothing that isn't traditionally gendered in one way or another. Right? Anybody have any questions about that one? Carl, would you like to?
So I know that in a lot of cultures in history, there have been cultures that have recognized, non-minor, but first recognize people who's gender doesn't match the category. Do you know if that was the case during this time in this place?
Um, there were eunuchs, so that's where it would come in to, to, to question as if we were to talk about a eunuch and how they were, I guess, considered non-gendered, you know? Um, and what they could and could not do because of, of that. Which was often sometimes by birth, so somebody who was born um, right, intersex would probably easily go into that category. But oftentimes also it was like done to them. Do you know what a eunuch is?
Yeah.
Okay. It's always fun when you have to talk about eunuchs and children's ministry. It's awesome. Okay. But that would be an interesting place to kind of dig into that, Carl. All right, Leviticus. These two are connected. So Leviticus eighteen, twenty-two. "You shall not lie with a male as with a woman." It is an abomination. And then in twenty, "If a man lies with a male as with a woman, both of them have committed an abomination. They shall be put to death. Their blood guilt is upon them." Okay? You up?
Sure.
Yeah. Seems pretty straightforward. So Leviticus is one of the five books of Moses. Um, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, right? And so they weave together the story um, of the early Israelites and their law, detailing events that were important to their history, especially the forty years that they um, wandered around in the desert and the lessons that God sought to teach them during that time. Um, these books sought to give them a common story, um, a common identity as they were returning from exile in Babylon. So it is thought that they were actually not written by Moses, but they were written after they had been exiled to Babylon, kind of lost who they were. And we have to like piece back their story again as they're coming back. Um, so Levit, Leviticus is primarily a book of law outlining proper worship, proper ways to sacrifice, how to address bodily disease, naming key festivals of the calendar year. And it also included prohibition that has been commonly interpreted as law against male-male sexual activity. So this is one of six hundred and thirteen laws that are found in Leviticus. One of six hundred and thirteen. So all of chapter eighteen um, addresses sexual purity. Numerous forms of incest is talked about. Um, familial intercourse is forbidden, um, as is sex during a woman's menstrual cycle, sex with any animal. Again, things that would make a person ritually unclean or an abomination. Um, you might notice when you read this verse, "You shall not lie with a male as with a woman", that this prohibition is for who? Men, right? Um, so if we were gonna take it and use it to prohibit same-sex relationships, what about women? Not included, right? I think being a lesbian, it's all right. So it's it's a right here. Um, so why would this text only refer to men? If we're thinking about the context of ancient Israel again, why is this one of the six hundred and thirteen laws given in Leviticus? Procreation, remember? Procreation was super, super important. If a man is going to lie with a man, there will be no offspring. This is also the reason why it talks about masturbation being an abomination. Because if you're spilling your seed, as it says, um, on the ground, you're not spilling your seed someplace where it can make a baby. Right? Okay, that's, that's one reason. Anything else come, come to mind for you? Right? What? They're unclean anyway, right?
Doesn't matter.
Three-fourths of the time they're already unclean. Patriarchy plays into that a little bit too. So one of the issues of um, forbidding consensual, healthy relationships between persons of the same sex, that was not the issue. The issue was forbidding treating another man like property. So this is where we get into the patriarchy. Women were viewed as property. They could be told or forced to have sex with their male caregivers or even other people, as we will see just a little bit in Genesis. They had no choice in the matter. Um, but it was unlawful for a man to treat another man as property. That was a woman's role, not a man's role. It would, it would be disgraceful for a man to play the part of a woman. So one thing that would happen in battle when one tribe would defeat another tribe, all of the men of the victorious tribe would have sex with the, rape the men of the other tribe. Because it's putting them, you are now my property. It's putting them in the subservient position of being penetrated instead of being the penetrator. Right? So it's a lowering, a less than, a humiliation. Um, think about when we talk about, when we gender other countries, what gender do we typically use? You know, when we talk about our sister city, sister, right? Typically it's a she. So other lands are usually gendered as female because they can be penetrated, they can be dominated, they can be conquered. Right? Um, for those who want to take a more literal reading of this verse without considering a socio-historic perspective, we must consider that as Christians, we have been freed from the Old Testament laws, right? Six hundred and thirteen laws. I'm not quite sure any of us come close to fulfilling a whole lot of them. Um, if we did, then we would have to be following Leviticus laws such as never eating shrimp, abomination to eat shrimp, um, wearing clothing of mixed, mixed fabrics, touching the sick or the dead, having relations with a menstruating woman. Um, Leviticus says that if a child talks back to their parents, the punishment is death. Um, so I'm not sure any of your kids would have made it to adulthood, nor you. I know, right? Um, death was also prescribed for those who um, didn't keep the Sabbath. So I hope you are here every Sunday. Um, or if you committed adultery. And do you remember what Jesus said about adultery? "Any man that looks at a woman with lust has committed adultery." So I think um, all of us are in really big trouble if we're gonna take Leviticus seriously. Um, I don't think we would pass. Um, but Jesus did take um, part of Leviticus very seriously. Um, when asked what the greatest commandments were, he took a verse from Deuteronomy and he took a verse of Levit, Leviticus. He could have taken this verse from Leviticus. He could have taken lots of verses from Leviticus. But what verse did he take? That's from Deuteronomy. Yep, love you. "Love your neighbor as yourself" comes from Leviticus, right? Okay? Any questions about this one?
So I noticed that both of these chapters also talk about child sacrifice uh, in terms of the god, Allah. Uh, do you know if there was temple prostitution involved? Because I know sometimes these prohibitions have more to do with the purpose of the sexual relations rather than itself.
And all that was very cultic. It was pagan. And so anytime that the Israelite people went into these other places, there was always the temptation to take on the worship of the other gods, right? And that's why it was so important, love the Lord your, like, uh, whatever that, you know, the commandment about just one God, right? And not doing all of the other ones. Right? So it was always prohibited for there to be child sacrifice for these people, for the Hebrew people. But the um, other religions around, the other pagans and gods around, often required child sacrifice. Um, so a lot of those were to keep bringing them back to the one true God and not be going off doing all these other things just in case. Like, we're gonna do a little bit of this practice over here, so we're good. And we're gonna do a little bit of this practice over here, so we're good. And God is like, no, if you're with me, you're with me. Does it make sense? All right. Genesis eighteen and nineteen. I could spend hours talking about Sodom and Gomorrah. Um, I don't know how I'm gonna do this in five minutes, so we'll see. Um, how many of you know the story of Sodom and Gomorrah pretty well? How many know nothing about it? Let's do it that way. Okay, thank you. Thank you for telling. That will help. All right, so the story of Sodom and Gomorrah is found in chapter nineteen, all right? But chapter eighteen is very important to the story that follows because the two are tied um, in some significant ways. So in Genesis eighteen, we have um, angels coming to Abraham and Sarah. Sarah is barren, right? She wants to have a baby, can't have a baby. The angels come and tell Sarah she will have a baby. That all happens in eighteen. Um, also what happens in eighteen is extravagant hospitality. The, the ways in which Abram, Abram and Sarah at the time welcomed these men into their camp is radical, extraordinary for that time even. But hospitality was another one of those things that was very, very, very important to the ancient culture. Because if people did not greet you with hospitality, there was a good chance that you would die. They're in the desert. There's not like they can go to um, Hooters down the street and grab a beer and some chicken wings, like, no quick trips on the corner. Um, hospitality really was a matter of life and death for ancient people. So we have these two stories that are very conflicting in the hospitality of the people involved. So in eighteen, um, God hears word, the angels hear word that things are going really south in Sodom. He's gonna go check it out for himself. And he says that he's gonna kill all of the people of Sodom. And there's this like back and forth between um, Abraham and God about, well, if you find fifty righteous men, save them. All right, if I find fifty. If you find forty, and it likes this back and forth. Do you guys remember that story? And finally at the end, is it ten? If I find ten righteous men? One, just one?
Yeah.
Then they'll save, save the city. So all of that happens and then the men go down into Sodom. Okay? Um, so I'd encourage you to read eighteen and nineteen together to kind of get the whole point of the story. Um, but this is the one where um, it kind of picks up. The people of Sodom come to the house. Lot, who is Abraham's nephew, meets them at the city gate. They, he says, please come stay with us. Like, oh no, we're just gonna stay in the square. Lot's like, um, no, it's not safe. Don't do that. You have to come stay up with me and my house. So they come and stay with Lot, these three angelic strangers. But before they lay down, the men of the city, the men of Sodom, both young and old, all the people to the last man surrounded the house. All right? So they surround the house and what do they want to do?
They want to get to know them.
Know them. That's right. They do want to get to know them. Um, I'm gonna show you this because I thought it might be the easiest way to do it. So if you want to look at the Hebrew, you don't just have to know all the Hebrew in your head. If you thought I did, I don't. And but this is a really good, um, you can type in um, Genesis nineteen four in Hebrew and then pull up BibleHub.com and it kind of takes you into each word of a verse in all kinds of different ways. So if we go down, um, this says, "All the people from every quarter." Remember when we read it in the verse, it said, "All the people from every man", or something like that. But the, "all the people to the last man", to the last man is not even in the Hebrew. So one could say, "Kol Ha'am" is "all the people". So "all the people from Sodom are at the door", young and old, men and women, all the people were at the door of Lot's house to gang rate these strangers. Is that very hospitable? No, that is not very hospitable at all. So um, what does Lot do? Hey guys, I have this virgin daughters. I have my virgin daughters. Why don't you just take them instead? So is, is this about homosexual behavior? It's about power. It's about rape. It's about, yes, we would describe those things as abhorrent behavior, right? That is abhorrent behavior. Um, so there's another story about Sodom that comes from a rabbinic legend. And um, it talks about how there were two girls that lived in Sodom. And one girl was starving. She had nothing to eat. She was about to die. And so another girl came and gave her flour so that she could make bread. Well, apparently there was a rule against that. And when the people of Sodom found out about this act of generosity, about this act of this girl trying to help keep this other alive, um, they burned her alive. So is Sodom a place you really wanted to hang out? It kind of had a reputation, shall we say? Um, let's see, back over here. So it's not, it's not about same-sex relationships. It's not even really about um, consensual sex at all. It's not about love. It's not about relationship. It's about power. Now, there are other places, um, in scripture that talk about Sodom and Gomorrah. Uh, see how many? Um, "These are their sins, pride, excess of food, and prosperous ease, but they did not aid the poor and needy. They were haughty and did abominable, abominable things before me." Commit adultery, walk in lies, um, strengthen the hand of evil doers. Okay, I don't see anything about same-sex relationships in those. Do you? Um, and Isaiah is talking about their sacrifices, how they do all of these sacrifices. And it's kind of like a lot of the prophets say, you're not living by my ways, so your sacrifices mean nothing. Um, in Amos, it talks about Sodom and Gomorrah, is talking about how they did not return. They didn't listen. They didn't turn back to God. Jesus talks about Sodom and Gomorrah in Matthew, and then Luke is the reversa or the mirror of it. "If anyone will not welcome you or listen to your words, shake off the dust from your feet as you leave that town or house." And then he says, "If they don't, they'll be like Sodom and Gomorrah." So that's when he's just sending his disciples out to cure the sick and blah, 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 blah. So what is Jesus talking about here? Same-sex relationships? Hospitality. The sin of Sodom and Gomorrah was in hospitality. And I have two minutes. Um, I would encourage you to go home and read Judges nineteen. I had never read it, um, thoroughly before this last week. Um, it's kind of a, a mirror story to the Sodom and Gomorrah story, just kind of retold a little bit. Um, but you know, anybody that thinks the Bible is just all sunshine and roses, here we have wantonly raped her and abused her all through the night. Yikes. So this is, it was just an interesting read in comparison to Sodom and Gomorrah. Um, then Genesis one and two talks about, um, a lot of times it is used for God created male and female, right? God created these two binaries and we need to stay in these two binaries of male and female. God also created light and dark, right? God created earth and water. In the creation story, we have these binaries, right? But did God also create things in between them? So if we think about light and dark, God also created dusk and daylight, dawn, right? There's this in-between where we have this spectrum and it's not just two binaries, um, land and water. Is that all we have? Swamps, right? Um, estuaries, is that the right word? Estuary? Marshes, reefs? So there's these in-between places. So could it be with male and female, we have a spectrum of in-between? Um, that is both beloved and holy and sacred, just as much as the two binaries. Um, Jesus is both Alpha and Omega. The two binaries, is that all Jesus is? No. All the alphabet, all the things in between and so much more. Um, okay, I'm gonna close with a story out of this little book. Um, all right. "The advertisement was posted on a student bulletin board at Georgia State University, a Bible study for people who have never read the Bible. I was intrigued. I was a youth minister at the time. I read the Bible every day. I had read the Bible for my whole life. But I wondered who would show up and what the leader would say. We met on a Tuesday morning in a side room of the campus library. I was one of five who attended. The others were all international students. I put on my best ignorant, albeit Caucasian face. The leader, a young zealous university student, began reading from the Gospel of John, chapter one. "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. He was in the beginning with God. All things came into being through Him, and without Him not one thing came into being." Being a tad more conservative than me, he took the group back to Genesis one and explained that God, Jesus, and the Holy Spirit were present together at creation. He used this idea to explain God's verbiage in Genesis one. "Let us make man in our image. The Trinity, he explained, was what God meant when he used the word us." At this point, a young Egyptian student raised his hand. "You believe God, Jesus, and the Holy Spirit created the world?" "Yes," our leader excitedly responded, "exactly." "Do you believe God is male?" "Well," replied our leader, "the Bible uses the word he and father when it speaks of God, so I typically refer to God in masculine terms." "And Jesus was a man?" The Egyptian student further questioned. "Of course," our teacher said, "he was a real man born two thousand years ago to a woman named Mary." "And the Holy Spirit's a man?" My fellow student asked. A little less certain in his speech, our near fearless leader responded, "Whoa, it's hard to say that the spirit is male or female, but since Jesus and God are referred to as male, I think it's appropriate to assume that their spirit is male." A long pause gave room for the Egyptian student to process the information. Finally, he broke the silence. "I have read creation stories from other cultures and religions. All of them have a male and a female God who through sexual intercourse brought forth the earth. But in the Christian faith, it is just three men that birthed the world. This is strange. Other faiths believe the world was created through the typical heterosexual process, but your faith only has three men. Does this mean that the highest form of relationship and creativity exists in same-sex relationship?" Quickly and anxiously, our leader responded, "Those are pagan notions of cre- of creation. Our creation story has nothing to do with sexuality. It has always amazed me how others read our stories of faith when they do, have not been forced to wear the doctrinal lenses we wear. And how ironic that we deplete our creation stories of gender and sexuality until we need those caveats to control or persecute another." Very interesting. All right, that's all I got. Gotta go do worship again. Please let me know if you have any questions. Send me an email and we'll talk more.